Greetings everybody, welcome to today's Bible study. We are going to carry on with our series, The Passion of the Christ, which is the week before the crucifixion. The subject for today is going to be the sequence of events, and we are going to start from the last supper all the way to when he was seized. We're going to base today's teaching on the scripture Isaiah, chapter 55, verse 9, which reads, "As the heavens are higher than the earth, so are my ways higher than your ways, and my thoughts than your thoughts, if you may pray." Father, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth, you are now taking us to a level where we are supposed to be, where you view things differently, as you are saying in heaven. We want by the end of this to be able to see things the way that you see them, so that we may be effective in everything that you have set us to do. I pray this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen. Reading the verse again from the book of Isaiah, "As the heavens are higher than the earth, so are my ways higher than your ways." Now, what the Lord is doing to us, he actually is putting us in a scenario where he says, "I, God, who is in heaven, see differently from you who is on earth." What he does, he introduces perspective, a particular attitude, or a way of regarding something at a point of view. He's saying, someone who's in heaven is thinking different from the subject, the sequence of events before the crucifixion of the Lord. One who's seeing from heaven is actually saying, finally, the plan of the Lord is going to take place. But someone who's on earth is actually thinking, "Oh, Jesus is going to die. What are we going to do? We are doomed." He says this when you carry on on the book of Isaiah, chapter 55. He says, "Just like rain comes down from heaven, and what has the earth, so that it brings forth bread to the eater and seed to the sower?" He says this so that you understand and you are at the context of where God operates. Number one, he says he sends rain, but every time rain comes down on earth, it actually for some reason is always an inconvenience. Whether it was a trip that you wanted to take to town, or it was a picnic that you are going to enjoy outdoors, or whether it was you hanging your towel on your shoulder or going to the beach, those plans that you made on earth get effected because of what the Lord said he is doing, which is the plan that he sent the rain. But to put it in context, he says, "It brings forth..." what? "Bread to the eater," and it brings forth what? "It brings forth seed to the sower." Which is the reason why, when the rain comes down, as much of an inconvenience as it can be, we never seem to say it must not come anymore, because we know the benefit that it comes with. So, the two perspectives, God speaking in heaven and seeing things the way that he sees them, compared to the perspective of men on earth, are two different things. But as we go through, we are going to see the goodness of the perspective that God holds as compared to the perspective that we hold on planet earth. When we read the book of Matthew, chapter 26, from verse 1 to 2, when Jesus had finished saying all these things, he said to his disciples, "As you know, the Passover is two days away, and the Son of Man will be handed over to be crucified." Now, when you look at this, you think, "It's bad, we are doomed." He opened the book by saying, "I'm going to be crucified." But according to the perspective of God, which is different from our perspective, things, when they look to God, they seem to have a different meaning as opposed to us. For instance, he says in the book of John, chapter 12, verse 24, "He says, 'Truly I tell you, unless a kernel of wheat falls on the ground and dies, it remains alone.' So if it does not fall, if it does not die, it remains alone. But if it falls and if it dies, it bears more fruit, more seed." Now, the perspective is, on planet earth, let everything be according to the way that we have always had it. But on the other hand, the Lord is saying, "I am aiming for more seeds," whereas we are not going to get more seeds if things don't change, sometimes to the way that we think is an inconvenience to us, according to God's standard. He says, he says this, and you get to understand that he thinks differently. He says in the book of John, chapter 16, verse 7, "I tell you, it is expedient for you that I leave." Now, when he says that, you think to yourself, "How is it expedient that you leave? How is it good, how is it of my convenience that you leave, whereas your coming actually showed me the goodness of God? How is it that when you leave, it is going to be the goodness of God shown?" Now, this you get when you start understanding what the Lord was saying. Now, in this expedient, he says, "It is for your benefit." He says, "It might be convenient, it's the most convenient thing to do. It's the most practical thing to do. As much as it can be improper to you," that is the realm where God operates. Now, when you look at the Pharisees and the Sadducees, you think, "How could they do this to God? How could they do this to our Savior?" But you fail to understand that them also, when you read the book of Matthew from 3 to 5, "Then the chief priests and the elders of the people assembled in the palace of the high priest, whose name was Caiaphas, and they skimmed to arrest Jesus secretly and kill him, but not during the festival, they said, or there may be a riot amongst the people." Now, when you listen to them thinking, when you listen to them skimming and planning, you think to yourself, "These people are against the will of the Lord." But when you cast your eye back on the book of Matthew, chapter 16, starting from verse 21, the Lord actually comes to his disciples, he speaks to them. He says, "Guys, I'm going to be taken away. I'm going to be crucified. I'm going to die. I am going to resurrect after the third day." What Peter does is, he pulls him aside and he says, "Peter," he says, "Jesus, that will not happen to you." Now, Jesus's response was different, because he says, "Get behind me, Satan. For you are a stumbling block to me, for you have got in mind the concerns of earth. You have not got the concerns of God, concerns of heaven, which is exactly what we are speaking about today, the viewpoint of God and the viewpoint of someone that is on earth." According to Peter, when the Lord Jesus told them that he is going to be crucified, die, and raised again on the third day, he was thinking, "If you go, we are going to be doomed, so you are not going to go." So, he says, "You actually preventing me from going is actually coming against the will of the Lord, but you actually allowing me to die is in the will of the Lord." Now, what does that mean? One can safely assume that if that is the case, then the Pharisees and the Sadducees were for the first time doing the will of the Lord. They were within the will of the Lord. If Peter wanting him not to die was against the will, so the ones that are killing him are within the will. So, it reveals something on this verse, because as much as they were planning, as much as they were thinking around every dynamic that might effect that they employ, it actually is the will of the Lord that needed to be said in order for it to allow them to be in the place where they were, where they thought they were conquering in their plan to kill the Lord. So, it was unknown to them, the Pharisees and the Sadducees, that it's according to the God's sovereign plan. It's his plan actually that is conquering. It's his plan that is coming into play. Now, if you think about it, the plan to kill the Lord is not something new now that he is 33 years old, that they are trying to kill him. They've attempted to kill him all the way from the age when he was two years old. The attempts were always there to kill him. Read the book of Matthew, chapter 2, verse 16. "When Herod realized that he had been outwitted by the Magi, he was furious, and he gave orders to kill all the boys in Bethlehem and its vicinity, who were two years old and under, in accordance with the time when he had learned from the Magi." Now, he got outwitted, and he actually killed everyone that was two years and under, trying to kill Jesus. Who's this? This was Herod. This does not stop here. Look at the book of Luke, chapter 4, from verse 18 to 13. He gets in the synagogue one day. What does he do? He pulls the scroll, he opens the scroll, and he reads a passage. "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, for he has anointed me to proclaim the good news to the poor." He explains the scripture, and immediately after explaining it, he sits down. Now, everyone that was in the room was not happy with what he was explaining. They pulled him out, they pushed him to the cliff, trying to kill him. "Now, explain this to me, if it was your plan not to kill him." They go at the edge of the cliff, but when they are there, he turns back and walks right through them. So, there were always attempts to kill him, but they were unsuccessful. Looking at the book of John, chapter 10, verse 30 to 39, he this time says to them, "I and the Father are one." Again, the Jewish leaders, they pick up the stones, they want to stone him. He says, "Okay, if you don't believe what I say, then you better believe what I do. Believe in the works that I do, because they come from the Father." Now, when he said that, he said, "The works I do are to prove that I and the Father are one." When he said that again, they tried to kill him again. Now, I don't picture Jesus preaching on the run, saying, "Believe the works of the Father, because it's not like that. I don't believe the Pharisees were running after him and saying, 'We are going to kill him.'" It was in a setup that anyone could do anything that they wanted at the time, but they just could not kill him. From the time that he was given back to, they could not kill him. Now, this will only explain that the reason why everything started to make sense, it is only because he pronounced it. Because he is God, he said, "This is now going to happen at this place in time. I am going to be crucified." And him doing that, as per the book of Matthew 18, 8, says, "Whatever you bind on earth is bound in heaven; whatever you bind in locune, whenever you release on earth is also released in heaven." So, he actually released himself to be crucified on earth, and heaven agreed. And when heaven agreed, it says, "Yes, whoever is on earth and is willing to be within the plan of the Lord in the crucifixion of Jesus can now take their bet." Now, what does this mean? Does this mean that we don't have any action that we take in our lives? Because if all of our plans are guided and are within the plan of the Lord, then it means, have we ever taken any decisions? Do we take decisions? Is there anything that we have done that is in the plan or not outside the plan? No, I've always had brainwaves, I've always had ideas. But when you think of it, going back to the book of Matthew, chapter 16, you understand something different. Higher up the scripture, before the Lord rebukes Peter, he speaks to him, he says, "Who am I?" speaking to the whole disciples. And everyone gives it his short, and Peter says, "You are the Messiah, the Son of the living God." Now, he says, "Peter, what you have just said to me, what you have thought is your brainwave. It's not actually your brainwave, it's not coming from you. It came from my Father in heaven." So, it is the influence of the Father that we got in time to reveal who the Lord Jesus Christ was. So, as much as Peter thought it was his brainwave or brain power or his thoughts that knew who Jesus was, but Jesus confirms and says, "My Father told you what you have just said." Going back down to where he says, "Get behind me, Satan." He says to him, "Peter, you have not received that which you've just said now from yourself. It is an influence that you got from the evil one." He says, "You are a vessel that is awaiting influence, either from the heavens, which is of God, or either from the evil, which is coming from the devil." Now, it brings about proper explanation to the verse in the book of Proverbs, chapter 19, verse 21, that says, "Many are the plans in the person's heart, but it is the Lord's purpose that prevails." It says, "You can plan according to what you plan, but if it is not agreed upon in heaven, and it is not the will that is projected on planet earth, whatever your plans are, will not succeed." Our plans, in a way, are only permissible in as far as they are aligned to his perfect will. One has to appreciate the sovereignty of God in this verse, as it demonstrates to us the limitations of our will. Basically, we grow to learn that we have no plan but to surrender to the purpose of God. Now, we move over to this verse where he embalms him. Matthew, chapter 26, from verse 7 to 12. It reads, "A woman came to him with an alabaster jar of very expensive perfume, which she poured on his head as he was reclining at the table. When the disciples saw this, they were indignant. 'Why this waste?' they asked. Aware of this, Jesus said to them, 'Why are you bothering this woman? She has done a beautiful thing to me. The poor you will always have with you, but you will not always have me. When she poured this perfume on my body, she did it to prepare me for burial.'" Now, the Lord is bringing the perspective of heaven according to the act that has just happened. The woman came in, posed it on Jesus. The others look at it as waste, because they have got in their minds what the concerns of the earth. They say, "We've got the poor to start off with. Why is there so much waste that is being done in the house of the Lord? If we are serving the Lord, whereas the Lord wants us to serve the poor and feed them." But the Lord says, "No, no, 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 no. It is for a purpose that this has happened." Why has it happened? It has happened to embalm me and prepare me for my burial." Now, back in the days was different from how we bury our loved ones in South Africa. Now, the way that the ancient Jews used to bury people, as you can see in figure A, you will see a dead man that is laying. What they would do is, they would put spices and perfume on them. Figure B, they would roll them up after embalming them with cloths, and they'd end up as they look in figure C. We find a portion of this explanation in the book of John, chapter 11, verse 44. "And he that was dead came forth, bound hand and foot with grave cloths, and his face was bound about with a napkin. Jesus said unto them, 'Lose him and let him go.'" Now, Lazarus, when he came out of the tomb, he came out as what figure C looks like. Now, when he's out, the Lord says, "Lose him." They came back to what figure A looks like. They had to unwind whatever they had put around him. Why was this process done? This process was done as per the figure that has now shown. That actually is the burial cave that was used in ancient Jewish culture. Now, that cave meant, because it has got 13 slots, which are 13 graves, you can bury in that cave 13 people. Now, burying 13 people in one cave, let's take the rate of death to be one person per week. What does that mean? That means, one person will be buried if there is 13 people. It means it will take three months to bury those people. In the case of Jesus, as he was alone in the tomb, there also needed to be embalming, because as much as he was alone in the tomb, we read that the tomb was shut using a stone, so the stench can escape around the edges of the stone. So, this is what the Lord is saying, speaking in the perspective that he is at. He says, "The woman was preparing me, but the disciples, the word of God said, they were indignant." Now, this is a feeling of annoyance or showing anger at what is perceived unfair. Now, what was unfair? It was not their perfume, it was not their woman. The Lord is not there, he is of God. Now, when they associate offence to the Lord, they must have seen or they must have been influenced by someone in order for them to feel this way. What actually happened? It is Satan, his name translated in Greek, Satana, who is accuser. What did he do? He did exactly what he did to Eve in the garden. He came to Eve and told Eve, asked her, "Did God say you cannot eat from any tree in the garden?" Eve said, "Nope, God said we can eat from any tree except for the tree in the middle, or if we touch it, we're going to die." Now, the devil says, "You are surely not going to die. You are certainly not going to die." But the reason why God said, "You must not eat of it," is because he does not want you to see your eyes to be open like his eyes, and he does not want you to be the same as him, knowing the difference between evil and good. Now, what the devil did to the woman was, he cast his eye on something different from that which is obeying the will of the Lord. What did he do? He found something that is desirable in the heart of the woman, and when he cast that, the woman let go of the will of the Lord, and because now, in verse six says, "The tree was now more desirable to the eye. It was more pleasing..." For what? For food. It was more desirable for wisdom. The woman, the hunger that the woman had, was exactly what the devil filled. But when he filled the hunger, because the focus was shifted, it made the woman to sin. It's not that the woman went out of his way to say, "I'm going to make sure that I don't do the will of the Lord," but it is because a carrot was dangled in front of the woman, saying, "This is what you want. You want to be smart? You want to be clever? You want to be this? Eat this." Now, because she wanted to go and get what was the desire of her heart, she ended up sinning against God. We see exactly the same method here, when he speaks to this guy, Judas Iscariot. Now, what happened? Reading from the book of John, chapter 12, 5 and 6, "Why wasn't this perfume sold? And the money given to the poor? It was worth a year's wage." He did not say it because he cared about the poor, but because he was a thief. As a keeper of the money bag, he used to help himself to what was put in it. So, what we see here, we see Judas stealing from the money bag that he was carrying. Now, him stealing is actually taking the focus on doing what the will of the Lord calls for. So, when he does this, he does it at the expense of the Lord. Reading the book of Ephesians, chapter 4, verse 27, "And do not give the devil a foothold. Anyone who has been stealing must steal no longer." Now, when you look at this, there's a connection. It says, "Do not give a foothold to the devil." Anyone who has been stealing, let him steal no more, because if they carry on stealing, they are giving a foothold to the devil. Now, Judas Iscariot did not intend on selling the Lord, but because he gave a foothold by stealing, a window opened up. Because remember, we said in the beginning, "You are a vessel of influence, influence either by the kingdom of God or the kingdom of darkness." So, Judas Iscariot, in this case, as much as he is a treasurer for the Lord Jesus, he actually is influenced by the kingdom of darkness because of the sin that is found in him. Let's go to the book of Luke, chapter 22, from verse 2 to 3. "And the chief priests and the teachers of the law were looking for some way to get rid of Jesus, for they were afraid of the people. Then Satan entered Judas, called Iscariot, one of the twelve." Now, when Satan entered, he needed to find someone that he can link to Jesus. Now, linking someone to Jesus, he needed someone who he has got a foothold, whom he has got a handle he can control. Now, when he looked at all the other disciples, none of them were offended by Jesus, because none of the preaching or the influence of the devil was sticking because of the sin that was absent in their life. But because of the sin that was in Judas's life, it stuck. So, when the devil planned with the Pharisees and the Sadducees, he went on the side of Jesus's disciples, and he was able to have someone whom, as much as he is in Jesus's team, could act against the team, because he is influenced by the devil because of the foothold that he has given to the devil. Now, one might think, "I will never be like Judas," but we are Judas Iscariots every days of our lives. When we prioritize the things of the world, when we prioritize the concerns of life more than the concerns of God, what we have just done is we have sold, we have betrayed the Lord to be crucified again. Now, one thinks, "Oh, but I've got stuff that I want, not at the expense of what the word of God says." The Judas, what Judas was, was the first person to sin under, to sin being the disciple of the Lord. And unfortunately for his sin, because the blood which forgives the sin had not been spilled out, he could not go back to his tracks, because as much as he could have wanted to, it was written, the word states that he had to sell him off. It was a pity that it was him who was found to be with sin in order for him to sell off the Lord Jesus. Now, when that happened, Judas now starts acting differently. Then Satan entered Judas, called Iscariot, the one of the twelve. When exactly did he come in? Let's read from the book of John, chapter 13, 26 all the way to 13. "Jesus answered, 'It is the one whom I will give this piece of bread, where I have dipped it in the dish. Then dipping the piece of bread, he gave it to Judas, the son of Simon Iscariot. As soon as Judas took the bread, Satan entered into him. So Jesus told him, 'What you are about to do, do quickly. As soon as Judas had taken the bread, he went out, and it was night.'" When you read this passage of scripture, you are prompted to think, "No, it was the Lord giving him the bread that made him to be the traitor." It actually wasn't in the bread. This passage of scripture is the same as the one in the Old Testament that says, "Then God hardened the heart of Pharaoh." What we miss here is, God did not make the heart of Pharaoh to be evil, but he hardened it in a state of evilness that it was in. Pharaoh had already decided in his mind that he was going to be evil, but the Lord just came and said, "In order for everything to hurry up, be in this position as you are." In the same case here, the Lord did not change Judas's heart to be a betrayer, but Judas had decided already to betray him. So, what the Lord is saying, he's pronouncing it, allowing the plan that is already decided in his heart to come to pass. He quickly comes out. Now, they go on to eat the Passover. Reading from the book of Mark, chapter 14, from 13 to 16, it reads, "So he sent two of his disciples, telling them, 'Go into the city, and a man carrying a jar of water will meet you. Follow him. Say to the owner of the house.'" He enters. The teacher asks, "Where is my guest room, where I may eat the Passover with my disciples?" He will show you a large room upstairs. He will show you a large room upstairs, furnished and ready. Make preparations for us there.'" "The disciples left, went into the city, and found things as Jesus had told them. So they prepared the Passover. Everything around this last supper is in the calf of the Lord Jesus." He tells them that they must go in the street and meet a certain person that is carrying a bucket of water, then they meet the person, says they must go up to the housekeeper and must show them where they are gonna have. They find exactly the place that the Lord had told them they would find. Now, it came not by a surprise, whatever happens and comes after this. So this means to me, the Lord was in control all the time. He knew exactly when, what was gonna happen and how it was gonna happen. When they sit down, finally, it's Passover, made in 26, from 26 to 28. While they were eating, Jesus took bread. And when he had given thanks, he broke it and gave it to his disciples, saying, "Take it, this is my body." Then he took a cup, and when he had given thanks, he gave it to them, saying, "Drink from it, all of you. This is my blood of the covenant, which is poured out for many for the forgiveness of sins." Now, when you listen to this, he now unfolds the true plan of why he is gonna be crucified. And when you look deep into the plan, for the person that was in the beginning, when he said, "I'm gonna be crucified," and you had your certain mindset, and you tried to stop him, but when he spoke, he had everyone of these events in front of him to choose from. So when now he explains to them, it's starting to make sense. For the remission of sins, for the forgiveness of sins, that needs to be him crucified. How many times do we, in our own lives? Just because the Lord has said no, or just because he has not come through for you at the time that you wanted him to come through, have we actually given up? How many of us have not reached this stage of the Lord, sitting you down and explaining that part A, B, C, D, and F happened because? Because he is God, he does not owe you an explanation when he starts doing his things. So what this teaches me is, one who is a child of God is not privy to have everything go his way when we are the children of God. There is a teaching that goes around, that because we are sons of God, everything that we ask for and anything that we want, we will get. That is heresy. If you take, for example, you as a child, having parents from your young age to when you graduated and began to do it on your own, what happened? If you count the number of yeses that your parents gave you when you wanted to do stuff compared to the number of noes, things that they denied you, you will get to understand that there is more noes than yeses when it came to your parents giving you instruction. "Dad, can I smoke? Nope. Dad, can I drink? No. Can I come in a little bit late? Nope. Can I go naked? No. Can I spill someone with this water? Nope. Can I do it? Nope." So if God, being a loving Father, how can he, we being called his children, say yes to everything that we ask for? It is a heresy. It is not as per God. When we look at this, he tells his disciples that, "I'm gonna die." But when they are seated, when they have done what he has asked them to do, he says, "It's for the remission of sins." When you are a child of God, you need to be a child of God. What is a child of God? A child is someone who takes yes and no from a parent, exactly the same way. We cannot be moved back and forth. We cannot come out of God because we cannot or we are not having our way. We cannot now, all of a sudden, because we are not having our way, come out of God. We have to stay up to a point where he tells us what will happen. Let's go forward. He predicts the falling away of his disciples. Reading from the book of Matthew, chapter 26, from 31 to 35, it reads, "Then Jesus told them, 'This very night you will all fall away on account of me. For it is written, I will strike the shepherd, and the ship of the flock will be scattered. But after I have risen again, I will go ahead of you into Galilee.'" Peter replied, "Even if I fall away on account of you, I never will." "Truly I tell you," Jesus answered, "this very night, before the rooster crows, you will disown me three times." But Peter declared, "Even if I have to die with you, I will never disown you." And all the other disciples say the same. Now, what is happening now? It is the battle between what the Lord has said and what the other disciples' reaction is gonna be. They have seen Judas go out, they are saying, "No, Lord, we are not gonna sell you out." Now, where this comes from? There was a hundred and twenty people that used to follow Jesus. At the fullness of time, some of them went off the following of Jesus. There remain seventy. Again, the seventy fell off, there remain the twelve. He asked them, "Are you now also gonna fall away?" They said, "No." "Where are we gonna go?" "Because words of love are found in you," Peter said. Now, he's defending that statement. He's saying, "Everyone can deny you, but I will die not having denied you." What they are failing to understand here is, they are not kept in the position where they are around Jesus by themselves. It is not their strength that is keeping them to stand and be around Jesus. They are failing to understand that they were chosen, they did not choose the Lord. Now, when this happened, reading from the book of John, chapter 17, from verse 12. "While I was with them, I protected them." This is the Lord Jesus, who was praying to the Father. He's saying, "Whilst I was with these disciples, I," Jesus, not them, "protecting themselves around me, I protected them. And I kept them safe by that name you gave me. None has been lost except the one doomed for destruction, so that scripture would be fulfilled." Now, they are failing to understand the fact that they are kept by the Lord, the fact that they are still standing around him. They are all geared up to fight, they are all geared up to do something, to stick around, around the Lord. Read the book of Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 5. "He predestined us for adoption to sonship through Jesus Christ in accordance with his pleasure and will. The disciples' actions, positions, and whereabouts was predestined by the Lord." This is what they're failing to understand. Ought he, them being around him, it is as a result of him choosing them, and them being kept out of the hundred and twenty that once followed him, it is the sifting of the hand of the Lord that sifted them out. We go to the part when the Lord prays in Getsemane. Reading from the book of Matthew, chapter 26, from verse 36 to 42. "Then Jesus went with his disciples to a place called Getsemane. And he said to them, 'Sit here while I go over there and pray.' He took Peter and the two sons of Zebedee along with him. And he began to be sorrowful and troubled. Then he said to them, 'My soul is overwhelmed with sorrow to the point of death. Stay here and keep watch with me.'" Going a little further, he fell with his face to the ground and prayed, "My Father, if it is possible, may this cup be taken," the disciple, "may this cup be taken from me. Yet not as I will, but as you will." Then he returned to his disciples and found them sleeping. "Could you men keep watch with me? Not fall into, watch with me for one hour? Could you men not even keep watch with me for one hour?" He asked Peter, "Watch and pray, so that you will not fall into temptations. The spirit is willing, but the flesh is weak. He went away a second time and prayed, 'My Father, if it is not possible for this cup to be taken away unless I drink it, may your will be done.'" Now, when the Lord comes back, he now pulls the crew, the starting in front, which is Peter, who was saying, "I will never, never betray you, Lord." He says, "Okay, come with me now, this is where I need your support." When he reaches the garden, it is where he needs the support. He tells them first that, "My soul is overwhelmed with sorrow to the point of death, so I need your support, guys." So when he's put them in that position, he goes and prays. And when he comes back, he finds them sleeping. I can imagine the impression on the Lord's face because he told them that they cannot drink from this cup. When he found them sleeping, he focuses on Peter, he says, "You had a big mouth, Peter. You said you could help me out. The standard of help that I required at the time was not the standard of help that you can offer me. The standard of help that I wanted was the help that you can get from attacking and fighting the right place." He says in the book of Ephesians 3, verse 10, "His intent with the church is not for anything else, but it is to show the manifold wisdom of God to the principalities and the powers." He says, "Our warfare is not against flesh and blood, but it is against the principalities and the powers." Now, he said, when he says, "I need support," he says, "I need that type of support." When you fight with principalities and the powers, you draw out your sword from your sheet and you cut the man's ear off, and then the man will know that you were there. But when you want to effect, when you do that and attack blood and flesh, you have not touched the source of where the influence of what they were doing is coming from. If you want to touch the source, you move back to a position whereby you pray and confront who? Confront the principalities and the powers that are actually causing that man to act the way that he is acting. Peter was geared up to fight for the Lord, but he did not understand where the Lord, Lord's help was gonna come from. He thought, "I will pull my sword and kill someone, which is flesh and blood, of which the Lord did not make his church for." He says, "We don't fight, we don't fight here, Peter. We fight from the realm of heaven. We fight against the power that influences you. And the only way that you can fight that power is if you can get on your knees and pray that that power may not have an influence over you." So you release the power on earth and heaven releases it. Or you stop the power on earth and heaven also stops it. So he's saying to him, "This is why I needed you. You cannot pull a sword. Those who live by the sword die by the sword. But I'm looking for someone who's gonna be effective in the things of the Lord, which is in prayer." Now, when they come in the garden to prove that he cannot do, he cannot support the Lord, he will, as what the Lord said, betray the Lord, he goes asleep. He comes and says, "You are asleep now. Okay, wake up, wake up, guys. The Son of Man is about to be given away." Goes back again, and he prays. He comes back the second time. He says, "Wake up, wake up, wake up, guys." He goes back again, comes back the third time, he leaves them. Says, "Okay, guys, come, the Son of Man is about to be given away." I think from this passage of scripture, we have to ask ourselves three questions. The first question being, why the garden? To help us answer this question, we will read the book of 1 Corinthians, chapter 15, from verse 21 to 22, which reads, "For since death came through a man, the resurrection of the dead comes also through a man. For as in Adam all die, so in Christ all will be made alive." Now, why the garden? Our Lord Jesus Christ was the type of Adam. He is the last Adam as per how he's referred to in the Bible. How is he the same as Adam? He is a man that is coming directly from God in the fact that Adam got the first breath from God. And our Lord Jesus Christ, we find that he is not the offspring of someone else. He is a seed of a woman. So he, in a way, got a breath, a fresh breath from God compared to anyone else. So he had to be in the garden where Adam of the old lost and ended up not doing the will of the Lord, where he lost the connection. So when Christ comes in, he comes in to pick up that which was lost in the garden. So that is why he is in the garden, so that he can pick it up in that way. Question number two that we need to ask ourselves, why do the disciples fall asleep? To help us answer that question, we will read the book of Hebrews, chapter 7, from verse nine to 10. One might even say that Levi, who collects the tent, paid the tent through Abraham. Because when Melchizedek met Abraham, Levi was still in the body of his ancestor. What does this mean? It means, "Olivai, whilst he was in the loins of Abraham." When Abraham met Melchizedek, he actually gave tithes as well. So this says, "Whatever is in your loins as an offspring, whatever action you take today, you are in a way teaching it the way to behave." This is a good way, this is a good thing that Abraham passes on to what comes out of his offspring, who is Levi. But he also has his bad things. If you look at the book of Genesis, chapter 20, verse 2, you see there Abraham goes to Gerar, and he meets Abimelek, the king. And when he sees and realizes that his wife is as beautiful as he is, he thinks, "Oh, the men are gonna kill me and take my wife." So he says, "No, Sarah, my wife, is my sister." When he did that, he did that with Isaac in his loins. If you carry on to the very same chapter, the book of Genesis, chapter 26, verse 7, "Oh, Isaac also meets Abimelek, the king of the Philistines. And he also denied the fact that his wife is his wife. He says, 'It's my sister.'" It's something that he was taught whilst he was in the loins. So what happened? When Adam lost and did not do the will of the Lord, whatever was in the loins of Adam had to follow suit. Now, the advantage that the Lord Jesus Christ has is found in a little statement that the Lord said in the book of Genesis, chapter 3, from verse 15. He said, "And I will put enmity between you and the woman, and between your offspring and hers. He will crush your head, and you will shake his heel. Concentrate on the word 'between your offspring and hers.'" A woman does not have offspring, but it is a seed that is deposited from a man to the womb that actually brings forth a child. But the Lord says, "From the offspring of a woman." He says in the King James Version, "The seed of the woman." Now, he means to say that the Lord Jesus is not an offspring of Adam. Although his body was incubated inside a woman's body, that is an offspring. But the seed did not come from the offspring of Adam. So what does this do? It gives the Lord Jesus Christ a neutral position where he can fight and conquer and gain back what he couldn't gain back or what Adam could not win. So he gets a chance, a fair chance, to stand against the temptation of the devil and actually conquer, which is what the disciples are not able to because they are the offspring of the Lord Jesus Christ. They are not, they are the offspring of who? Of Adam. Now, the offspring of Adam were already defeated. They were taught in their system that when this comes to pass, we are defeated already. Which is why, I think the Lord bringing them to the garden was to prove to us that even if we tried to fight that fight that he warned for us, we wouldn't have made it. Because he brings them. And why is he coming back to check up on them? It is to prove that, guys, you and me are a different make. You are coming from the loins of Adam, I am coming straight from God. You are coming from the loins of Adam, I am coming straight from God. So, where I stand, you are unable to stand. Which is why, when the Lord was praying, he acted them. He said, my sorrow is to a point of death, help me out. Not that they did not want to help the Lord Jesus, but it is because their DNA, their being was taught not to be able to withstand against the vile of the evil one. Why such sorrow? The deep feeling of distress caused by loss or disappointment. Reading the book of Hebrews, chapter four, verse fifteen, will help us understand. For we do not have a high priest who is unable to empathize with our weaknesses. But we have one who has been tempted in every way, just as we are, yet he did not sin. When you look at this verse and you think about it, you think he is talking about every way possible, but you think to yourself, how? At the times of Jesus, there was no cocaine, there was no menthol, there was no cars. Was Jesus tempted in the area of stealing cars? Was he tempted in the area of, um, um, being craving for menthol or cocaine or whatever? It's not in the type of sin, it is in the denying or it is in the staying and doing the will of the Lord. It is in the you not being influenced, fighting the influence. It is you, the craving of the cigarettes and the craving of alcohol, comes in a certain way. Firstly, a seed is dropped in your, in, in, in your mind and it becomes like a feeling that you cannot overcome. And for each and every type of sin, that feeling is either more or less. So, it says, in the area of resisting sin, he was tempted as the worst thing that you could be tempted in. Reading from the book of Luke, chapter twenty two, verse forty four, to understand what type of pain that he was in. And being in anguish, he prayed more earnestly. And his sweat was like drops of blood falling to the ground. Now, when you listen to this, you think he was just sweating and there was just little droplets of blood falling from Jesus's face or wherever he was sweating. And it was fine, he was getting on praying. But there actually is a, a, a medical term for what had happened to him. It's called hematoacidosis. It's an instance when capillary blood vessels that feed the sweat glands rupture and exude blood. This occurs under extreme physical or emotional stress. Now, the, the journal of American Medical Associates, they actually published an article of what happened to Jesus medically. They say, it's when the mind and emotion is under severe stress, such that your mind tells your body that you are experiencing physical pressure and it starts acting accordingly. Now, the way that your body functions is, when I slap you on the wrist, what will happen is, one, you will feel the heat from the friction. Immediately after the heat, the pain will come. When the pain will come, your mind will say to your system, send a lot of blood in that area so that should there be a, a virus or something that we do not want in the body, the white blood cells may attack and bring us to safety. There is why immediately after the slap, it's the slap, it's the heat, it's the pain, then it's the redness around the area, it's blood flooding that area and cooling it down whilst it is ensuring that the area is fine. Now, what happened in the case of Jesus? It was like a slap on the wrist, but his body was actually feeling pressure all over. So, what happens in this case is, the epidermis, which is the top layer of your skin, actually separates from the hypodermis, the bottom layer of your skin. And blood, as a result, rushes in between the two layers. So, when that happens, the sweat pores are actually exposed. So, the blood that is rushing in between actually spills out. So, that is how much pressure he was in. It was as if he has got a large, a huge physical pressure on his body. But it was actually something, there was a mental, but the levels of stress that the mind could translate were no longer in the threshold of it being a mental stress. They said, no, body, this is physical stress, act accordingly. Now, when you read that verse, and he prayed more earnestly and his sweat was like drops of blood falling from the ground. You look at the word earnestly and you think of it, the word meaning showing sincere and intense conviction. When you look at it and think about it, you think the Lord showed intense conviction when he prayed. You think he said, Father, when he was dripping blood, you say, you think he was saying, Father, let this cup pass, or if it is not your will, if it's not your will for this cup to pass, let me have it. It was not that. It was more a sincere conviction. Because he was on the ground. He had no strength in him. He was like, Father, if this cannot pass, let your will be done. He was rendered powerless, the man part of him was powerless, the man part of him as a result of fighting sin, so that the will of the Lord comes about, was finished. He is arrested, immediately after the prayer, he stands up. Read the book of John eighteen, from four to six. Jesus knowing all that was going to happen to him, he went out and asked them, who is it you, who is it you want? Jesus of Nazareth, they replied. I am he, Jesus said. And Judas, the traitor, was standing there with them. When he said, I am he, they drew back and fell to the ground. Even after being so rendered powerless, even after sweating blood, he still kept the godly power, which is why it was bringing that much pain to him. Because his brain was saying, you can conquer this thing, you can use your godly power to ensure that you don't fall into this temptation. But he kept it away immediately after the sweating and the praying. He comes out, he says, it is me. When he says that, they drop back and fall to prove that the godly power that rested in Jesus, for him to be called Theus Antropos, still rested in his full measure, but he allowed it to happen. Now, when you read verse ten of the same chapter, then Simon Peter, who had a sword, drew it and struck the high priest's servant, cutting off his ear. The servant's name was Malchus. Jesus commanded Peter, put your sword away. Shall, shall, shall I not drink the cup the Father has given me? Now, Peter goes now and fights in his own earthly way. Pulls out the sword and he shocks the servant's ear. Jesus says, those who fight by the sword, live by the sword, they die by the sword. Put it away, that's not the right tool for now. The fight that he wanted, the support that he wanted, was a support that was gonna affect the source, that was influencing the people that had come to arrest him. Peter striking off the ear did nothing to the source that the soldiers were getting, were getting the information from. We wrestle not against flesh and blood, remember? When you wrestle against flesh and blood, you are just wrestling against a puppet. If you want the puppet to stop moving, you move higher, move high up the strings. As when you get to the hand of the puppeteer, that is the person that you need to deal with if you want the puppet to stop moving. So, the Lord here is saying, Peter, you are busy dealing with the puppet. I am dealing with the puppeteer here. So, when he said that he takes the ear and puts it back on the man's ear and the man's head, and I cannot imagine the confusion that got onto Peter's head. This man wants support from us. But when I support him by cutting the man's ear, he again stops me and he says, I must put my sword away. And he picks up the ear, puts it back on, and he wants me to support me. I don't have any other way to support you. Peter was in a position where he wanted to do stuff for God, but he couldn't because what he could do was not powerful enough for him to be effective in the realm that we are fighting in. Now, he goes and denies the Lord in his confusion. Reading from the same chapter, verse seventy four, then he began to call down cases and he swore to them, I don't know the man. Immediately, Arista cried. Then Peter remembered the word Jesus had spoken before the roaster closed, you will disown me three times. And he went outside and wept bitterly. Now, this was a silent reminder to Peter. And him crying now, for me, I think it is him being taken back. Because he did not betray Jesus when he denied him. He actually betrayed him when he spoke to him and he did not believe him. Because he is God. When he spoke, he said, this is gonna happen. So, Peter, if he did not want to betray him, he would have just did exactly what the Lord said and not argue with him. Because what we are seeing now is proof that Peter is going to deny him. How many times in our lifetimes does the Lord speak to us about stuff? And we deny him. How do we deny him? You'll say, I've never denied the Lord, I've never been Peter, I've never said, no, Lord, you, Jesus, you are not Lord. Denying him is denying him the right to become Lord over your life. How is he Lord over your life? When he says things, things happen. When he says stuff, you believe in them. If even the very salvation that we have is based on us believing in him. He says, for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son so that whoever believes in him shall not perish but have eternal life. So, the perishing part does not come, not only when you are not a Christian. It comes when you do not believe in him, what he says. What he says is gonna happen. His word is him. When we believe in him, that is when we are saying, Jesus, you are Lord. We don't have to agree that he is Lord through our mouths, but the actions of whatever he says, when we do it, we are saying, we crown you, Lord. We crown you, Lord. But whenever he says stuff and we do not do it, we do not believe it, it's when we are uncrowning him as Lord. First Corinthians, chapter two, verse seven to eight. Now we declare God's wisdom, a mystery that has been hidden and that got destined for our glory before time began. None of the rulers of this age understood it. For if they had, they would not have crucified the Lord of glory. Now, the Lord says here, guys, I did not hide this from you only because, and only for the sake of hiding it from you. We are dealing with the principalities, we are dealing with the powers that plan. Sometimes I will have plans, good plans for you. And I will not, I, I may not be able to reveal the end of the plan to you. It's not because I'm giving you a hard time or it's not because I'm not God anymore, but it's because whatever I do for you, I know the end result of the same. As heaven is higher than the earth, so are my ways higher than your ways and my thoughts higher than your thoughts. The Lord is saying, when I speak, I speak from the position of knowledge. When I do things, I do them from the position of knowledge. It's not that I like putting you in a position that you sometimes feel you are in, where you feel like you are ill-informed about what is happening in your life. When you feel like the ending of this, you should have known before you got into it. But he's saying, I know what I'm doing, I'm still in charge. Whenever you meet those circumstances, whenever you come across those times, just know that as per the disciples, you will be thinking according to what a human being thinks. But if you can remember that I'm still in charge, even if you are concerned about what will happen in life, remember, I'm the God who performs miracles. If it's time that you see passing you by, remember, I'm the God who's able to bring back time. If you see that it's something that you need to have by this time that you're not having, he's saying, don't shift the focus on doing my will. Keep the focus on my will. I am the Lord and I know the plans that I have for you, plans to prosper you, plans to have, plans for you to have life and life abundantly. He is God, he is enthroned. I think there is nothing more that explains to us better than the series where he dies, the series of events that take place. Because when you look at it from the eye of someone that is on planet earth, it does not make sense. You are just like Peter. But he says, before the beginning was, the Lord Jesus was already slaughtered, so the plan was made before you were even placed on planet earth for your salvation. Friend, whatever circumstances you are facing, if you may take away from this that the Lord is still in charge. Thank you.